Call this meeting to order. At six thirty-five. On Tuesday, August twenty-second. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence? You tell them to hold it down low because we pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, May I have roll call Monica, please?
Here.
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 Moving on to approval of the minutes. Need a motion for the passing of August seventh, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do you have a non-cab roll call Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Need a motion for the approval of August eighth, two thousand seventeen minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do you have a non-cab roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to the approval of the agenda. There is a motion for or need to amend the agenda. There is a need to amend the agenda this evening to remove grant item two point one of approval to accept funds from the Colorado Department of Education. This item will be postponed for a future meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call Monica?
Aye.
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 Moving on to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do you have a roll call Monica?
Aye.
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 Moving on to audience comments.
Can I just start? I was told I had three minutes, there'd be a timer, I don't want to, I don't want to jump the gun. Because I could talk forever, so if we're not going to time me, then be ready.
Mr. Rollins, did you read the instructions?
Oh, I forgot. Just before we get started here, I have to inform that, again, as you come up, you must state your name, your address, and if you're a resident of the district, and you have a lot, you have three minutes. Three minutes to give your speech, and time cannot be passed over to other individuals. Okay?
All right. My name is Brianna Ellen, and I'm the physical education teacher at Kemp Elementary. I am not a resident of the district, however, this is my fourth year teaching in the district. Before I start, I would like to ask the six board members sitting up front to think back to your elementary school days. I'd like you to think back to what you remember about elementary school. My guess is if you're thinking back, excuse me, you're not remembering where you placed on your reading scores, you're not remembering your math test scores. My guess is that you're picturing recess. You're picturing the pickup games of kickball on the playground. You're picturing playing tag with friends. Maybe you're imagining that that first lesson you learned that you can't pick on kids bigger than you. Now keep that in the back of your mind as I continue. There's a lot of research that supports this, and Ms. Gilmore will be presenting tonight, she'll be talking about the research. But I'd like to talk a little bit about what's happening at Kemp Elementary. So I want to start with some numbers. First number I'd like to start with is seven. Seven is the number of minutes each day in our schedule that students are allotted for recess, seven. Seven minutes includes lining up. The next number I'd like to point out is thirty. Thirty is the number of minutes that the Adams Fourteen School Board policy requires per day for elementary school students for recess. Fifty-six point two five. Fifty-six point two five is the number of minutes that the Kemp Elementary students have averaged per week in physical education, sometimes more, sometimes less. Ninety-one point two five would be the number that you would arrive at if you added up the average minutes recess and physical education of physical activity that Kemp students receive in an average week, ninety-one point two five, which falls short of the next number, one hundred and fifty. One hundred and fifty is the number of minutes of physical activity needed per week to be in compliance with HB eleven ten sixty-nine, as well as Adams Fourteen School Board policy. If you're doing the math in your head, you would have arrived at fifty-eight point seven five. Fifty-eight point seven five is how many minutes we fall short each week. Fifty-eight point seven five is in a perfect world where there are no scheduled interruptions to physical education or recess, and so far in first quarter alone, we have nine interruptions for our students. Fifty-six point seven five are the number of minutes that our students are losing in valuable time for social emotional development. Now I'd like you, again, to think back to those favorite moments you had in elementary school. Our students are missing almost an hour of that per week. I'd like you to consider that when you're thinking about how much physical activity is important in our schools this year.
I have some light reading for you to enjoy when you go to bed at night.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Kristen, ooh, my name is Kristen Gilmore. I'm the Kearney Middle School PE teacher. I am not a resident of Commerce City. I have been teaching at Kearney Middle School for six years. As soon as I was told about the recess issue in the elementary schools, I wanted to support my other PE teachers that are here to represent the elementary schools. I gave you all the research, I'm not going to put you to sleep with it, but I did take the opportunity to email the wellness coordinator, the PE coordinator, sorry, for the Saint Rain Valley School District. The Saint Rain Valley School District has put a lot of schools, or a lot of the schools have put physical activity as a priority within their curriculum, their daily schedule. And up here, this is an actual screenshot from Betsy Ball, who's a principal of Meade Elementary in the Saint Rain Valley School District. She said, "We started by doing a whole school book study on Spark," that's what the book looks like. "The brain research sold the staff on the importance of movement. We do two school-wide movement breaks a day. One, first thing in the morning for fifteen minutes, and one in the afternoon for ten minutes. Students go to different stations throughout the school or do classroom activities. We also do an all-school movement dance on the first Friday of every month. We have a ten-minute lunch recess and a ten-minute regular recess each day." And she goes on and on. And when I asked her if the whole school, the whole staff bought into this, she said yes, they were all into it, that's why they did the book study, and the entire school puts physical activity as a priority, not just testing, not just assessments, physical activity. And they're not cutting recess, they're adding more physical activity throughout the day. I even emailed, there was another principal, I didn't have time to add this into my presentation, from, oh no, oh, there it is. "North Ridge Elementary in the Saint Rain Valley School District is not cutting recess. The principal told me they have highly, they have valued recess and encouraged multiple and additional movement breaks in addition to the two recesses provided for all grade levels. She also said that teachers are strongly encouraged to use other, to use other consequences instead of taking away from recess, because it's not appropriate to take time away from their recess. And they also do before and after-school activity clubs." The research that, I don't know how much time I have, I mean, I'll talk forever for you. I gave you the Shape of the Nation report that goes out every year, that's from our National Organization for Physical Education. Oh darn. Well, shocked.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can she keep speaking for a couple more minutes, because I'm learning?
Excellent. Well, too bad we're not moving while we're learning.
Mr. Rollins? What are we doing?
All right. But on a serious note, I'm sure a lot of you might have seen this diagram on the right that the mental, the brain scans show that after the kid on the, or the person on the right, it says that's the brain sitting quietly for a long period of time. After a twenty-minute, a twenty-minute activity break, and I'm not talking about PE, I support PE, but we're here about recess. Recess and other brain breaks, that's, it's unstructured, it allows that free play, and that's the brain function after just twenty minutes. Those neurons are firing, the kids are focused, they're going to be more engaged. We got to give kids a reason to want to, want to come to school. Yes, we're here to teach them the reading, the writing, the math, all that good stuff, but if they don't want to be at school, they're, they're going to shut off, they're not going to want to be there. But anyways, but please enjoy the research I have provided you when you're laying in bed at night and you need something to fall asleep to. Do you have any questions for me?
So, hold, can you get his attention? Dr. Brago, could you provide the BOE the policy on recess, please?
I heard that there was going to be some activity about recess, but this is what the Colorado Revive statute states, and it's really, it, it says, under physical activity, the state does not require elementary schools to abide daily recess. Okay, I'm not done yet, please, but I think what everyone is concerned about is, you're right, board policy, but it's talking about minutes, six hundred minutes per month, it's not necessarily recess. It says physical activity that could be accomplished in different ways. It could be recess during lunch, it could be the physical education classes, it could be physical breaks or classroom activities that involve, involve any kind of motion in the classroom. So there are different ways that you can do it, it doesn't necessarily have to be done with recess. So, again, that's what we're looking at, is how to get that movement in the classrooms.
What does our policy say?
I believe our policy states that we have two recess breaks.
And Ms. Ellen, am I correct, saying you only have one seven-minute recess per day? Is that correct?
Our master's schedule grades kindergarten, or fifth grade, and I just have some kind of teachers here who can probably stand up and back this up. There's seven minutes.
If we're going to discuss this, we got to hold it down. Or we're not going to get through, we got a whole list here. Remember, you have class tomorrow, your kids have school, so just be professional, and as the person is presented, please don't cut them off. And you'll provide us the board with the policy?
Right. I can, I can research all this for you to make sure that we're in compliance and to make sure, I haven't seen every school's schedule, but I do know that our main emphasis is just to improve academics.
Alex Yonder? Did I pronounce it right?
My thing is mostly on lunch.
Uh, state your name, school, or address.
My son is in third grade, and my name is Alex Yoder. Mostly mine is on lunch and our new principal. We've stood in the same spot for four years now, and we are now told that we're not even allowed to be in the school unless we're volunteering or part of the school. My son has to literally wolf down his lunch and has no time to eat. They're pretty much, by the time he's getting his tray and sitting down, they're pretty much telling him he has to throw his food away. And he's coming home starving, he's not happy, there is no recess, of course, so he's not getting any activity, and he just doesn't like the school anymore. There's other parts of the school that we're having problems with, the parking, they're now having the kids walk out, and there's parking right there. They're literally having them come around, and where the bus used to be, now they're having the cars park right there waiting for their kids. I'm worried that either my kid or kids that I watch are going to run out and get hit by a car. It is unsafe. That is all I have to say at this moment.
My name's Nicole Harmon. I have a second grader at Rose Hill Elementary, and I did attend Rose Hill Elementary and Kearney and Adams City High when I was growing up. So my son comes home and he's hungry. He went from perfect attendance, on time, every day, loved school, to begging me not to go because it's no longer fun. He comes home starving, his lips are dry, he has a headache, he's fatigued, it's unhealthy, and he told me he has four minutes to eat. Okay, now he's seven, so he doesn't really know time, but in his brain, he thinks he's being punished. He's like, Mom, what did I do wrong? Why can't I eat lunch? Why can't I go to the bathroom? Why can't we play anymore? School's no longer fun, and when I went to Rose Hill, that's why I put my child there. I love this district, and I love the teachers, and I love the school. But now, it's becoming a problem, and you guys are punishing the children because the scores aren't high, but that's not the kids' fault. Maybe we should send home more homework, and I could help at home to boost your scores, but my kid's already smart. My kid's already there every day on time. So it's not fair that my child gets punished and gets lacked recess and lunch and is unhappy the first week of school, the first day of school, because the scores can't get together. You know, maybe we should just all vote out of taking the tests, and then we won't have to worry about the scores. Because I heard we could vote out of TCAP and CSAP and every name that it changes every year. I remember when I went to school, some kids voted out of it. Maybe all the parents just vote out of it, and then you can't punish our children no more for the scores. I don't know what, but this isn't really a good idea to take away recess and lunchtime. It's not fair, it's not appropriate, it's not fun. It's definitely not going to help your situation at all, in my opinion. And I do have a master's degree, and I've looked at plenty scores, too. Taking away recess and fun makes them miserable, they don't want to learn, they don't even want to be there. That's all I have to say.
Danielle Moya? Ms. Moya?
Hi, I'm Danette Moya, and I have a son that goes to Rose Hill, and he does have a disability, and that's my main concern, is lunchtime and recess, too. So he does have a disability, it takes him longer to eat lunch, and he hasn't been going out to recess because he's still eating lunch, it's going to take him about a good, you know, twenty minutes to eat, and it's unfair that he has to stay inside. Not only my kids, their kids, too, have to stay inside and not be with his peers to play outside on recess, it's unfair. That's how I feel about it. And then we do have concerns with the principal, too. She's been giving us a hard time about allowing us to walk our kids into the classroom, which I've always done, like, I do not leave my kid, I stay with him for like twenty minutes until he's fine. So she's telling us that we are not allowed to walk our kids to the classroom, specifically like SSN and all of our, our students, which I'm not okay with, because my son's a runner, he's already run out of the school building this week, last week, so it's a problem. And I just want to make sure, you know, he's getting enough time to eat. He's came home also, drank two cups of water, dry lips, dry mouth, I just think it's unfair. Not only for my kids, but for all our kids. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Hold, hold, I got a question. I have a question to Dr. Brago. Is the seven minutes district-wide, or, I'm confused about, I haven't heard this before.
And, Mr. Thomas, I want you to understand one thing, is that people are saying things, I don't know if it's fact or not, I'm going to have to go in and find out if things that are being said are fact or are they fiction, because I don't know, so I have to go out there and investigate it.
Because Rose Hill is one of my schools, and I do make appearance there as much as I can, and for the parents' things to come up here, and I'm taking it very personal, but I take all the schools personal. But for lunch and parents can't walk their kids to the classroom, is that something new that the BOE doesn't know about? I'm just helping you out, because is that district-wide, or is this for Rose Hill?
I'm not quite sure, but I know that throughout most schools in the state, they only have one entrance for the parents to come in, and parents are not allowed to walk their kids to the classrooms, that's for safety purposes.
So, we come, uh, we're not going to get in a debate, you brought up a thing, they're discussing it, and we'll get an answer back to you.
So, Mr. Thomas, the best thing I could do is go there and find out and bring you back the facts, because, again, I don't know, I heard somebody say that there was seven minutes for lunch, I heard another parent say twenty minutes, that they, they're taking twenty minutes and not enough for recess, so I have to go out and get you the facts. If you would like me to do that, I can.
Please do.
Good evening. Today I decided to wear my Adams Fourteen shirt, because I believe in Adams Fourteen. I attended the pep rally with all my coworkers. In that pep rally, we had a guest speaker that talked about our why, like, why are we in this education business? And it also talked about that we need to believe in better, because I believe that is the new slogan, and I believe that, too. And because of that, I wanted to introduce myself, and I wanted to explain to you my why, and I wanted to show you how my first week of school was. So, again, my name is Amy Summermeyer, I am a second grade teacher at Rose Hill Elementary School. I actually did not go to college to become a teacher, I actually went to school to study the Middle East and be a diplomat. I tried working in the US Embassy, and then I realized during the Egypt Revolution, I saw the power of education. I saw my friends revolt against the president, but they had no education to be able to support themselves. So I came back home, because I wanted to make sure my, my, my friends, my family, my neighbors, were all protected by education. That is my why. I am here for everybody to have the right to education. This is my first week of school. I had a student freak out because his mental health care provider was not able to help him. Our therapist is cut in half in between two schools. My social worker is cut in half in between two schools. My kid has hit every single person in my classroom except for me. He has hit the assistant principal. I have dreams that I'm getting stabbed by a box cutter knife by this student because he's not getting the support he needs. We do not have enough staff. I can't even get a one-on-one pair to help me full-time, because there are one and a half pair professionals cut from my school building. I'm trying to help my children. Those test scores are embarrassing, but I don't know how to teach when my kids are not getting their basic needs met. Mental health services are not provided, and we can't even, we're barely meeting the people who really need it. What about those kids who are on the cusp? And now when they grow older to high school, they're gone and straight to the pipeline system. I thought our job was to prevent student, our children from going to prison, but I feel right now, I feel like your why is different than my why. The other, you've heard about lunch recess. On my schedule that I was told at a staff meeting was from a district initiative, there's a thirty-minute block. We have our thirty-minute lunchtime. Students have fifteen minutes. That's why it's seven minutes. By the time they get in line and come back to the table, they have seven minutes to eat. Then they have fifteen minutes of lunch. It is not fair that my student with Down Syndrome, or my students that are in a wheelchair who have to be spoon-fed, are not allowed to finish their meal or go to recess and be outside and get fresh air. How are they supposed to learn? How are they supposed to interact? My parents are starting to bring in school lunches because their kids are not eating enough. My families can't afford that. That is why we are a free and reduced lunch district. That is why I thought we all got free lunches. My families can't take advantage of it, because there's not enough time. So instead of me being able to teach, I have to help hungry students. I spent seventy-six dollars on lunch, or on snacks for my students, and I'm not getting reimbursed, which is fine, I'm not here for the money. My why is to improve education, but I should not have to feed my students. I should not have to deal with behavior that is out of my control, because there's no mental health services. I have not, I've been on the same lesson plans for three days. I'm trying to improve scores, but when their basic needs are not met of feeling safe, feeling comfortable, and feeling well-fed, I cannot teach. And I'm here because I think our whys are getting miscommunicated. I have my last six seconds, I have a letter from a grandmother who couldn't come, and she would like me to pass this out.
My name is Jessica Hernandez, my daughter goes to Rose Hill, and she's a third grader. Now my daughter don't go to, back to class, because she'd be home hungry, starving, headaches, and now she's had to hurt herself because she can't use the bathroom? That's wrong. Now my daughter said, Mom, pick me up early, pick me up at two o'clock early, I don't know what to do. Now it's hard for me, because I have to pick up my other daughter to Kearney, drop her off, pick up my other daughter, and it's hard, because I don't drive, I walk. And it's hard for me to pick up my, my kids. I dropped my first daughter off, almost eight-thirty, get my other daughter ready, drop her off at Kearney, walk home, pick up my daughter again, and then walk to Kearney. We'd be home at five o'clock every night, feed them, take them back, and then go to bed, same time. And it's too hard for me to walk, because I don't drive, I can't drive, I get seizures and everything. Now my daughter don't want to go to class, because it's hard for her. She get headaches, because she got bullied, last year got hit three times in her head. Now she can't go, can't do nothing. She can't go outside and play, because she's like, Mom, I get nightmares, I get nightmares, I can't eat, I can't eat to class because... Because she can't eat. She eat little bit and it's all her lunch away. And I don't know what to do. Now, she don't wanna go to back to class anymore and it's hard for me. And I don't know what to do. And my ki, my, my kids love Rose Hill. She does. She love her teachers and everything. But it's hard for her because she's a preemie and she have to hold herself to use the bathroom. She have to go home and use it. And she tell me, "My mom, my stomach's hurting. My stomach's hurting." Why? Because I can't use the bathroom because the chief, the principals, we can't allow to use the bathroom. And it's hard for me because I take her to the hospital and everything. Because I don't drive and this time it's too hard for me because I have to get up, get my two daughters ready, drop them off and I don't have no way to get there at Kearney. And it's hard for me to drive. I have to walk every morning, every afternoon with my two daughters. And it's too hard for me. Thank you.
DeRene Armelin?
Good evening, board members. My name is actually pronounced Doreen Armelin. I am a DuPont teacher and I teach the first grade. And I'm here to talk a little bit more about the recess situation that we have. And also at DuPont, we do have, for example, our recess starts at eleven o'clock. From eleven to eleven-ten, we line up our children, understand, line up our children to get them outside to wait for the staff member that has to dismiss their class to get outside so that they can then monitor our children outside on recess. So, the teachers can go and have their lunch. They line them back up at eleven-ten. They come in, stand in a massive line so that they can then get their lunch, sit down and eat and return to class by eleven-thirty. So, with that being said, I did a little research and I went down the medical road to kinda talk a little bit about how important it is for us to have recess for our children. And the article that I searched, it says, "Yay for recess." Pediatricians say it is, it is as important as math or reading. Playtime can be as important as class time for helping students perform their best. Recession is most children's favorite period and parents and teachers should encourage that trend. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, recess can be a critical time for development of social interaction. And in a new policy statement published in the Journal of Pediatrics, Pediatrics, Pediatricians from the AAP Support, the importance of having a scheduled break in the school day. Children need to have downtime between complex cognitive challenges, says Dr. Robert Murray, a pediatrician and professor of human nutrition at the Ohio State University, who is a co-author of this statement. They tend to be less able to process information the longer they are held to a task. That's not enough to just switch from math to English. You actually have to take a break. The AAP Committee that developed the statement began its research in two thousand and seven, expecting to discover that recess is important as physical, is, is as important as physical outlet for children. What they found, however, was that playtime benefits extends beyond the physical. We came to the realization that it really affects social and emotional and cognitive development in a much deeper way than they had expected. It helps children practice conflict resolution. If we allow them unconstructed play and it lets them come back to class more ready to learn and less fidgety. It is also important to distinguish recess from physical education, says Ramster. While gym class offers kids a chance to stretch their legs and get their heart rate up, it is still considered instructional time with very different goals from those with unstructured downtime of recess. Thank you very much.
Uh, Cheryl, Shu, I can't pronounce it. Schweiner?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Schweiner. I'm a teacher at Rose Hill Elementary. I, um, am an SSN teacher, which means Significant Support Needs. I work with students with severe disabilities, Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy. Um, I've been at Rose Hill for four years now. I've been working with CDE for two years now to make our, um, program a model program in the state of Colorado. We're on our way to becoming a model program with their guidelines and with their support. Um, CDE guidelines say that our students with disabilities need to be integrated into the general education classrooms as much as possible. They need support from special education, um, for academic, IEP goals. Um, but they need time with their peers during recess, during lunchtime, um, for social-emotional reasons. Um, our lunch this year and our master schedule combined with recess is thirty minutes long, which means that our students get fifteen minutes to eat their lunch and fifteen minutes to go outside for recess. My students with disabilities don't have the ability to eat on their own. My students need one-on-one support, um, to go up to like to get their lunches, um, to sit down at the tables, to be fed and to throw away their lunches. By the time they are finished with their lunch, they miss out on recess with their general education peers because they don't have enough time to finish their lunch and to go outside. My students, in order to get recess time, have been taken out to recess by themselves. So, instead of interacting with their peers on the playground, they're outside one-on-one with a teacher by themselves for recess because they do not have the time allotted to finish their lunch and have a recess. And this is on a master schedule which I told was delegated by the district. So, it brings tears to my eyes that the program I've worked so hard on for four years is crumbling beneath my feet and the students that don't have voices for themselves are not getting the education they deserve. And I also will speak to the fact that my parents, um, are not allowed in the building anymore. So, my parents used to walk their students into the building. My students have, um, motor needs. They have physical needs. They have cognitive disabilities. Um, some of my students can't walk. Some of my students are in wheelchairs and my parents are not allowed to walk them into the building as per, um, principal request. Um, my stu, my parents are having a really hard time, um, getting their needs met. And so, I'm fighting hard to represent my parents and my students. Um, and I'm asking for your support. And that's all I have to say.
Ray Ruiz?
Hello, my name is Ray Ruiz. I have a son at Rose Hill. And my concern is, um, the school zones and the crosswalks around the whole school. Nobody abides by this crosswalks, the speed limits. Um, policemen I've talked to for five years or so, I've been volunteering, me and my wife, for five years at the school dis, at, at Rose Hill and Hanson. So, nobody abides by these rules. Nobody slows down for the school zones. And the timing of the lights do not match the new times. So, by the time everybody's in school, then the lights in the school zones come on. Um, it, it's just a madhouse going through these streets. Today, just north on Sixtieth, I almost seen two students get hit from somebody taking a right turn when they were riding the crosswalk. They didn't care. It happens daily. I've informed the police. Every year I call them at least two, three times to let them know about this. But not even the police do the school zone properly either. I've seen them fly through there with the lights flashing. No reason. Parents don't abide by it. It happens every day. I go through the school back and forth, literally minimum twice every day. And I never see very few people abide by the school zone or the crosswalks. Thank you.
Suzanne Torres?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Susana Torres. Vivo en Commerce City. Mis hijos van en camp. Tengo un hijo de, en quinto grado, uno en segundo y uno en primero.
Good afternoon. My name is Susana Torres. I live in Commerce City. I have three kids. One in fifth grade, one in third grade and one in first grade.
He's been a volunteer since my kid was in, in kindergarten. I've been a volunteer for the past five years. Y desde que el doctor Abrego vino a hacer el cambio, yo estuve a favor del horario, de los cambios que él quería hacer.
Since Dr. Abrego came aboard, eh, I was agreeing with him with all the changes he was ready to make.
Pero resulta que el martes pasado, eh, mi hijo de primer grado me dice, "Mamá, me iba a subir a los changos y cuando yo ya estaba para jugar me dice, "Trrr, es hora de entrar" y no tuve tiempo de recreo.
And Tuesday, my son came home and he says, "When I was ready to jump in in the playground, eh, my, the bell rang already and I didn't have any time to play."
Y entonces pregunté a mis otros hijos qué estaba pasando, pregunté a la escuela y voy, me estoy dando cuenta que los niños les está dando siete minutos de recreo una vez al día.
And I asked my other kids and I asked at the school and I find, find, find out that they only get seven minutes for recess a day.
Y en el, en el almuerzo les han estado quitando cinco minutos de almuerzo.
Even during breakfast, they are taking five minutes away from them to eat breakfast.
Antier fui a la escuela para cerciorarme por mí misma si eso estaba pasando y era cierto. A los niños, se, desde que se forman ya están contando sus siete minutos para ir a, a, al recreo y se me hace injusto.
And the day before yesterday, I went to kind of a make sure by my own and I find out that the kids are counting the minutes. That is only seven minutes for them to get ready.
Al igual que en la comida, nos dan veinte minutos, pero el niño que está hasta atrás, él no tiene los veinte minutos para comer. Tiene menos, menos minutos, cinco minutos.
And it's the same thing for, eh, when they get the breakfast or lunch. They have only twenty minutes and for the kid who is at the last in the line, eh, the, he only has five minutes, you know, by the time he gets to the, get the food.
Así que yo le pido al doctor Abrego que no, que los niños no deben pagar esto. Queremos mejorarlos. Yo estoy con usted. Pero como le he dicho a mi director y se lo dije a usted y a varios de la escuela, háganos, participar a nosotros como papás. Nosotros podemos mejorar si usted nos dice cómo hay que hacerle, pero no a los niños.
But I'm asking you to not punish the kids. I already talked to Dr. Abrego, I talked to my principal and several others about don't punish the kids. Please get the, hold the parents accountable and ma, make sure that we know what we can do to, to fix this.
Eh, le, eh, hecho propuestas a mi director, que son ciento setenta días de escuela, promover que los padres vayan a voluntariar una vez al año para que se den cuenta que se puede hacer un cambio, pero el cambio está en nosotros como papás, no en los niños, quitándoles ese tiempo que lo requieren para que su cerebro, este, crezca.
And I already talked to my principal. They have a hundred and seventy days, uh, a year for the schools and we should ha, hold accountable the parents and ask the parents to come and volunteer and make sure that we fix this through the parents, not through the kids or punish them.
Y ahorita que estoy dando cuenta, o sea, resulta que no es mi escuela, son todas las escuelas. Entonces, pedimos, los niños pueden aprender si les das más cómo trabajar. No quitándoles ese, esos quince minutos porque les daban dos recreos, ahora más uno de siete, eso no los va a ayudar.
And by coming here tonight, I realized that it's not just my school, but it's many others. And before, they used to have two recess by, eh, fifteen minutes each. Now, they only have one, seven minutes, and it's not fair for the kids.
Y como dije, al igual que las otras escuelas, mis hijos y yo estoy encantado de mi escuela. Y yo no quisiera tener que retirarme por esta situación. Podemos mejorarlos si nos agregan a nosotros como papás para mejorar nuestras escuelas.
And like my, my kids and myself, we love the schools and I would hate to take my kids away from this district. But please, eh, let us know how we can help this, to fix it.
Porque eso no va a ayudar. Ya nos dimos cuenta en todas las escuelas. Necesitamos que los niños tengan sus horas de recreo. Necesitamos que nosotros nos hagan trabajar. ¿Cómo le hacemos? ¿Qué tenemos? ¿Cuál, qué, qué, qué podemos hacer para nosotros mejorar esos niveles?
And let us know what we can do to fix this, eh, to improve those, eh, test scores and what we can do to fix it.
I apologize. Se que. Gracias. Eso es todo.
Estela Beeta?
Good evening, President Rola, Superintendent Dr. Abrego and distinguished members of the board. I am here tonight to advocate for some students and staff from Adams 14. I am asking that you reconsider allowing some of our former students from DuPont that are now going to ACMS to take the de, uh, the district school bus from DuPont to ACMS, like the other students that catch the bus from there. Yes, these children are from out of district, but they have attended DuPont since they were in kindergarten. Number one, because they, their parents, I cannot see. Their parents are staff at DuPont. And number two, because their parent has chosen for them to be here. And they would like for them to continue in our district and at ACMS. Literally, these kids have grown up in our district and with their classmates and they would like to continue their middle school years with them. I do not blame them because this is where they know everyone. Middle school can be a little intimidating and even more so when they cannot attend the school where all of their classmates are. So, I am asking again for you to reconsider allowing these students to ride the bus from DuPont to Adam City Middle School so that they can get to their school and continue their learning experience with all the students that they have bonded with and become friends with since kinder. And according to school board policy, JC-R Guidelines for School Attendance Areas, number five, transportation for students granted permission to attend school outside their attendance area must be furnished by their parents unless, and I quote, "unless," spaces available in district buses without disruption of regular routes and loading areas. And as far as I know, that, that bus is not full. So, there should be room for two or three more kids to attend the, or ride the bus. So, I will hand this to you so you can look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Kyle Bryan?
Good evening, board members. Uh, my name's Kyle O'Brien, art teacher at Monaco Elementary. Um, so, when Dr. Abrego, when you were giving the little slideshow about test scores from all different schools, I heard, uh, Ms. Quintana say, "Hey, I'm not a teacher, so I don't, I'm not sure, you know, why there are these discrepancies." Um, so I was kinda moved to comment on that. Um, so, how can we improve test scores? Smaller class sizes will certainly help. Um, as an art teacher, as a music and PE teacher, we have every student, every class in the school. And I can tell you, classes that have, I mean, there's no magic number for me, but classes that have twenty-four students are so much more manageable, less behavioral problems. Um, I mean, there are fifth grade class that has thirty-two students on the roster. So, when there's thirty-two students in a class, fifth graders, there's gonna be some behavioral problems which interrupts the learning, which has a direct influence to the, the test scores and the amount of learning that's done. When there's a lot of behavioral problems, less learning gets done. That's also contributing to poor test scores. Um, more support will certainly help. I know there were comments about lack of support in the districts, in the schools, whether it's school psychologists, paraprofessionals, um, special ed, paraprofessionals. You know, not, I'm not a, a classroom teacher, but even in the specials classroom when I have those need, those students with special needs and they don't have that support, I can't teach these students how to become amazing artists when I'm trying to help one student sit in one spot in his, or her desk. Um, certainly recess. If I were an, an art teacher, I'd be a PE teacher. I'm a marathon runner, an ultra marathon runner. Um, I'm not suggesting that our students run fifty miles, but even running for, running for, for five minutes outside, you know, we need more recess. When I go out for a run after school, my brain, I start to think better. Hey, that's how I can fix this lesson. This is how I can reach that student. When I'm out running, my brain is working so much better. So, that recess, I mean, a lot of members behind me, is a big issue for them. It's a big issue for, for all of us. That needs to be resolved. And then lastly, um, when this gentleman brought up the, the school lights, I, I noticed that this morning too. I always drive by Adam City Middle School, um, this morning and the lights were flashing and it's not in sync with the new school time. So, I think that's something that also needs to be looked at to make sure those speed limit signs, school zones are, um, reflective of the new, uh, looked at to make sure those speed limit signs, school zones are reflective of the new uh, schedules. So. Wow, three minutes goes by fast. Thank you guys so much.
Barb McDowell.
Hi, Barb McDowell. I'm speaking tonight on the behalf of the Classroom Teachers Association. Good evening, President Rola, Superintendent Abrego, distinguished members of the board. Um, I'm here to update you on what is happening as I hear it. This is my seventh year as president of the Classroom Teachers Association. And every year, the first week is always a tough week and the last month is always a tough month. The first week, trying to make sure all teachers are getting the amount of planned time they need, um, the resources they need. And at the last month, we're dealing with non-renewals, people who are leaving. And I have to tell you, this year is the most caustic year I have ever had. There are so many issues going all over this district, starting with KMS and the building leakage. Um, Adams City High School students and their schedules. And hearing about students who are le, leaving the school because they're told to leave, they don't have a schedule, go. We're legally responsible for those children while they're in our care. Um, class sizes. We're short five math teachers at the high school, I understand. And we just heard from math teachers that there were upwards of sixty to seventy students in a class. Um, recess being cut at the elementary level. You've heard it all. Tonight, we've been dealing with the mentors, uh, not getting paid. Severe, uh, service, special service providers. We ta, I talked about that at the last board meeting. And that includes our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, our speech and language pathologists, our social workers and our psychologists. We are down five positions of social workers and psychol, and psychologists. Our, while they really work with our children with severe special needs, as you know, my granddaughter has them, I would be appalled, my daughter would be up in arms and she'd be calling everybody at the state level if her child was having to walk around to the doors. Unacceptable. We're, I, I am understanding we have no OTs, occupational therapists, so we're contracting them out. And our children that require them, they need consistency. That means they need to see the same person all the time. And if they're constantly changing out our OTs, then they're not getting what they deserve. We talked, as I promised, last board meeting. We were going to speak with all the special service providers. We did. We met with them. And then we requested to meet with the director of spec, special ed. They've chosen not to meet with us. You've made these people at-will. We've requ, we've asked them, then maybe they should go somewhere else because not another district in the state of Colorado puts them at-will, the way Adams fourteen does. And then, when I hear, I have to check because I'm not sure that those are factual. The perception I see is, I don't believe these parents. I don't believe these teachers. You've got a group of people here who love and care for this community and the kids and the teachers here. But right now, I'm hearing teachers asking to leave now. Now! Something's got it. And parents taking their kids out. Do you want to shut our district down? You, you are on the right path if that's what you're wanting to do. Thank you.
Guillermo Serna.
Guillermo Serna, one four one two two, is the hundred and second place, Commerce City, Colorado. First, I want to thank you for the extension of the two years that you fought hard along with the parents and the students and administration that went with you. I congratulate you on that. It's not going to be easy in these next two years. It's going to be challenging. I heard a superintendent say that he needed help. But when it comes to feeding children, you don't take that away from them. It was a child that went through this district that put the bill to feed all these kids because of the energy level. In perspective, that energy level is needed for that child to learn. If you don't feed them, they don't learn, they don't stay, it's uncomfortable. It's challenging for you. But at the same time, this community has come to get gri, or a grip of the needs of their children. I went before the city council in the process of marijuana in this community. And not a single parent showed up. But yet, what ails you and what takes on the effect of marijuana is the mixture with alcohol and alcoholics and all these pills that we are taking nowadays. That's what's coming, not just this district, but statewide. All of that stuff stays in the milk of the parent. And if they want to breastfeed, it'll hurt that brain power in developing. But yet, sometimes at city council, I got, well, who sees these places? Well, it's the kids and the parents that now have it at home. And the parents can buy this and can buy that. Yes, it's legal, but it hurts the mind. And then they put it on the school district that, hey, they're not learning. Well, there's reasons for that. And I thank you for the question that you asked. Why does it land in the hospital or at the high school? Well, if you have negative and a negative and a negative and a negative in each one of these schools and all you shoot for is a thirty-two percent or whatever just to make it over and keep the state happy, you are empowered as a rep, representatives to change things and not just follow what the state says. You don't do things to our children that every other kid in this state of Colorado and the big cities, in the big schools are receiving those services. It has to be a normal life. Our school teachers, and this comes to the community, need to have the opportunity to, I'm just going to finish this thought, Mr. Rola. To be able, the district to compete. We need to start looking at a mill levy, to look at what we need for this district to help you as a board member. And you have to ask the community, to ask these parents to fill out and go with this mill levy to help you. There's a lot more that I could say, but I think some of the parents that are here are just concerned. Thank you.
Okay, we will, uh, get back to the comments that were presented today by the next board meeting. That is the policy that we have been following that we always get, try to get back. And if we don't, then you can get on us again. And so hopefully, Dr. Abrego will find somebody to answer their questions, uh, for the next board meeting. It has been, uh, brought up that, uh, by a board member that they would like to go into an executive session to deal with, um, personnel at this time. So I guess it would be under Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four dash six dash four oh two for, parentheses four, parentheses five, personnel. So I need a motion. Do we want to move into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, Monica?
Aye.
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 Okay, we will now, uh, move into an executive session and, uh, to discuss personnel at seven-thirty-five.